...are present, we will start with the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to declare that the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united by indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And this is a fully public school, we need to gather students, parents, staff, and community to provide quality education with an emphasis on developing the full potential of the individual.
A hire here, and this hire came in after the agenda was printed last, late last week. And it is for a fully intermediate school EA, Naomi Anderson, starting on August the 26th. That's spent two, nineteen fifty-eight per hour and up to thirty-two and a half dollars per week. So that individual will be included in our hires. The consent agenda also includes the approval of minutes and the board bills.
I'll make the motion through the conference center. Second, three.
Motion by Nathan, seconded by Wayne. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? And it will be duly noted that I'm abstaining. Next, we have a resolution for accepting gifts. We have two donations this evening. The Initiative Foundation for seventeen hundred and fifty dollars. The designated purpose is to hands out psychology courses for the Foley High School. We also have the Public Health with a donation of sixteen thousand dollars for the Alfred classroom at the Foley Elementary School. Is there any background information that we have on that sixteen thousand, like what will it go in for?
No.
Isn't that the grant?
Oh, yes, yes, that's, um, it's Tiffany's. Edward Grant, the Alfred Hospital.
Alright, so I would need a motion and second for the resolution for accepting two gifts.
So.
I'm sorry, no recess, I'm not certain what's happening. Mr. English, are you feeling okay?
I'm just getting clinics. I thought there was one lady.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't understand what was happening.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm sorry, motion was made by Patrick and the second was?
Nathan.
Nathan, thank you. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Um, we have the Velcan Kids here, we're looking at some new rates and effective August the sixteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Sure, thank you. So Madam Chair, I'm from the school board. Uh, just looking for your approval to accept the intention to increase our Velcan Kids Care hourly staff wages. I will send you four packets, the hourly wages current are there, and then the proposed wages. We haven't seen an increase in our hourly wages since we started in twenty twenty. And then we are incomparable to other districts with the same standard.
Just a point, but since we don't need a resolution, we'll just give a motion.
Okay. It's listed as discussion action in our... Are there any questions for Mr. English regarding the increase in this school, um, care program wages? Hearing no discussion, we just need a motion and second, thank you, on the adoption of renewed wages.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Patrick, seconded by Ken. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll just help there, Stan.
Thank you. We have our GoFan for online ticketing, it's also a discussion action. Mr. English?
Alright, Madam Chair, Madam Board, thank you for allowing me to speak with you today. Uh, a few things, we'll just kind of go through just a little bit of information I'm going to go to in detail as to what GoFan ultimately, all the aspects that it has. Um, and then the opportunity before you ask questions, and then a report at the end that would be related to switching to GoFan that would require just a slight increase in gate fees and costs to bring us in line with other members of the Grand Ridge Conference and to kind of accommodate for some of the features that GoFan can provide for us. Uh, so there are a lot of online ticketing options out there. The Minnesota State High School League for this year, for state tournaments, is going to be transitioning to using GoFan for home town ticketing. Uh, the Central Lakes Conference, which is obviously called Schools, Sartell, Sartre Rapids, they moved exclusively to GoFan. Uh, and in our, within our conference, we don't have one particular platform that we're going to use. Uh, Bull Falls uses GoFan. Uh, the big selling point for us is that it talks to our schools, which is our online scheduling program. Um, so that you can have your schedules imported in for ticket links and that kind of thing. Uh, they charge no cost to school districts to use their platform. Um, they have their ways of recouping their money through the ticket sales, which we can get into. Um, and another thing that was a big selling point for me is they have a fundraising platform in addition to ticketing. Uh, so, uh, looking at acquiring donations for our weight room fundraising project, it's a secure and safe way uh, to go down that road. Um, you know, it's for using a few others, um, and it was kind of hard to remove a personal account for using Venmo and that kind of thing, and I just did not think that that was appropriate to go that particular direction. This, uh, this helps out with, with all of that. So we just, like, quickly, I'll just kind of go through some of the, so Kelly, you can go to the next one. Um, again, it talks to our schools, the schedules are already built. Um, then they populate into the, the ticketing experience. You can use it, um, for, uh, your individual events, you can use it for your, your season passes, those kinds of things. It's, it's simple and easy to do, been playing around with it the last week. Um, it should be something that we can get up and running with it in a hurry. So, this is kind of what it looks like a little bit from the viewer, that you have a desktop or on your cell phone, there's an app. Um, all the, just, the our school's calendar will populate. Uh, your tickets will be right there, you can purchase multiple tickets at a time. And then you can offer and have in your student passes, your, your season passes at the very top as well. Um, you know, this is, uh, just, this is my only kind of just playing what it would be like. Um, you know, all the, the calendar will be up there, easy, easy to find, easy access on both, uh, the phone app or through a computer to, to purchase those tickets. You have the option to either pass GoFan's fee along to the user, or you can absorb that fee. Um, I've had discussion with all the, uh, activities directors in our conference that have transitioned to some type of online ticketing platform. When they start, they typically absorb the fee to start and aren't passing it off on their customers going. So that it's a nice flat rate, just like it would be if you were up at the gate. Uh, so that would be my recommendation would be, uh, for us to absorb that fee, that's how GoFan gets theirs. Um, they have a breakdown of, uh, what they will charge. If not, I can, um, what they'll charge, they need to get over ten dollars, which we don't have, with the exception of you could do like prom or something like that on their, your tickets for that. Uh, they take a dollar plus five percent down load, and then anything under ten dollars, which all of our gate fees are, they take, they take a dollar per ticket that you sell. We can, so when our, for our ticket takers, what's nice about this one is with Venmo and some of the others, you need iPads, you need, um, to be able to have, uh, Wi-Fi. So like when we do section baseball, a lot of times with using that, they have to be on their own personal device. With this, there's no need for an iPad, everything can come right on the user's side. So they can just, they just get clicked in as they, as they appear. Um, and then they just get checked in, um, and it says something to you that you use. And you can group check in if you're coming with your family of five or whatever, uh, and take care of that. And just a nice, easy, uh, experience. So you'll just see here, this is just something that just gets checked in, they show their ticket. Um, you get checked in, and once you're checked in on that ticket, no one else can come in with that one. So there's no like screenshotting it and sending it and texting it to someone else, so that you can get more people to save ticket. Uh, just one entry per ticket. Um, they do provide us with a point of sale for free, um, so it would be something that we could potentially transition to as well. You know, if you show up, you don't have a ticket, you can go online and you can buy one. But they do offer a point of sale for you to be able to use a credit card right onsite. Uh, and this is something that we could look at too, for providing an option for concession stands as well. Um, so they, they provide you with quick and easy QR codes as well with instructions, so these will get sent to us. Um, if, and you showed up to an event and you don't have a ticket, uh, you can go this direction. Um, and, and the main reason for, for going to online ticketing is, is you get away from having to have your room afterwards. It's just better for schools, um, from the financial side of things, to, to have an account that way. Um, the reports are great, you can modify how often and how frequently you get your reports back. Um, it'd be daily, weekly, monthly, um, super nice for the business office and for us to track, to get, to get, uh, you know, just how many people come to a typical game and, and track that over time as well. Um, so they get little reports that can come in, uh, they come the next morning after each event. Again, you don't have to, to wait for the money to be counted, to get put in the bank, to get sent down, that report, it can just be right away. And then again, you can get a weekly statement that looks very similar to, to a lot of our budgetary items. Um, so I guess the suggestion that I would make to the board, and this is what we would have to have discussion and action on. In order to not, uh, lose out on that one dollar that would be donated, uh, that would be taken by GoFan for each ticket sale, increase the price to seven and five dollars. Um, this is what Malaca charges, it's what Albany charges, it's what the vast majority of the teams in our conference charge at the gate, seven and five. Um, and then that way, when the person goes on and it says seven dollars for a ticket, it costs seven dollars. It doesn't cost seven and whatever GoFan is going to take. On their end, we would absorb, um, that cost. Um, what most schools will do then, they still offer cash at the door. They don't necessarily advertise it, um, but they'll still accept cash in the transition period. Um, I do know Albany and a few others, Cathedral, they're going cashless. Um, this year, they're not going to accept that anymore. I don't think we're ready to make that jump in one move. Um, so you would still accept, uh, cash at the door, um, but the, the price is a little bit more, um, just same for the students. So the students wouldn't get charged any different, whether they bought online or, um, uh, in cash at the door. Slightly more for a belt, it helps take on some of that fee that goes back right away to, to GoFan. Um, and as well as helps promote the use of the online ticket. If they're the same cost, some people are setting their, you know, will just come catch the doors, what they expect. Uh, so that way you can help promote the, the online sales. Season passes, uh, what we suggested with these would be to keep our current fee, uh, fee structure in place. For season passes, it'll be the exact same, um, but on this one, um, the markup, the convenience fee that GoFan charges would go on the user if they choose to buy their season pass online. Um, what's super nice about that is it downloads right to their phone. Um, it's not, it, they have, still have to check in. So it's not like a paper card where you could come in with it and then pass it back and have someone else come through with it. You're still checking in to each event, and then it just resets after twenty-four hours every time that you use it. Um, so you can check those individuals and monitor, uh, those as well. Um, the, the paper passes that we hand out at the moment, they cost us six hundred dollars. This would take that off because it would be just part of the package of utilizing GoFan. So, questions first?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Uh, so this is also like for things like the fall play.
Correct.
Um, and I know, I feel like the fall play, I don't know about, forty minutes, because my kids are jocks. Uh, they, they unfortunately inherited my athletic ability, so, uh, I'm probably not going to a lot of athletic events in the near future to watch them. But, uh, I know at play, like, there's a senior getting free, like, at a certain age. How does this, are we going to keep track of that with this as well, or is that just going to be a walk-in as it is?
It would still be a walk-in, as is, we still keep the policy of sixty-five, whatever, we're being free. Um, and that does help initially too with your transition to, to online, if they don't have a smartphone and that kind of thing. That wouldn't necessarily matter because they're not getting charged to get in. Yeah, and I do know it's with more of a cost, we could look at it, uh, with like the play, you can do reserved seating too with your tickets, and you can take your seats and you can go that route. Um, they can charge more on their end than a dollar per ticket to, to be able to do the reserved seating, but it's definitely another option that we could explore with the platform as well.
So fans coming here, we'll do the same thing, and if you're going to another school, you'll do the same thing?
So these would be for, we would go for GoFan for all of our home events. Uh, a lot of our away events have already transitioned to using online tickets. Um, so when we go and, and play a game at Albany, you have to purchase a ticket online before you go. Um, and it's just, it's, it's a, it's on the webpage, so when you are looking at the time of the event, the location, there's just a little spot to click to, to go right to, to purchase your tickets. Um, the A.D.'s promoted out ahead of time, um, you know, to remind your parents and fans, you know, here's the online ticket order, that kind of thing to try to help with easing some of that, uh, preliminary transition change.
Um, just a question about that, um, you know, I think people are getting more and more used to seeing that with cashless and whatever. Um, maybe just having some signage, because I know I go to, I've gone to a few events where people are like, oh, if you don't pay cashless, you have this QR code, just like maybe as an option as for transitioning, and then just signage that would be our, I mean, that's kind of the ultimate goal, is to go cashless.
And we can make additional, um, but they do provide like these stands when you go with GoFan, but they'll, they'll have those for us to, to set out, with just some simple instructions on, on how to get there and a QR code to, to purchase your ticket as well to set out for the, the public.
And just so that they know, and only eventually, like, that would be the only option, you know?
Yeah, right, and, and as far as that, like, to these go, to any state tournament now is cashless. You can't get in without purchasing a ticket online for any state tournament, for any activity.
And we'll still use our ticket takers or whatever?
Yes, yeah, they're still getting from ticket takers, you still need someone there checking people in, um, and...
Well, you need more people, some people say they need more.
Uh, I don't think so, uh, I think, uh, we've done it for section events, where you're required to, um, to have electronic, uh, tickets. And we've been able to, to function through those section events, which in theory would have more attendees than a regular season, and been able to do the same with a lot of ticket takers.
And you still have the passes for board members, is that still on?
I asked about that today, there is, it seems very simple once we're up and running, uh, to, to provide complimentary passes as well. Yep.
The ten dollars gets things.
I, I was going to ask, what was your, what is your timeline for transitioning away from cash then? Are you hoping to do that next year, or are you hoping instead of...
I would, I would say two to three years, and just kind of see how it goes. We'll be able to, with the data that we get back, see how many people are purchasing online tickets to see if we're ready to just pick the, to go completely cashless. I would, I would assume that wouldn't be next year, but I would say two to, two to three years seems to be the, the typical transition period for a district.
I would advise, um, that if we're going to that ten dollar for cash versus the seven dollar, that we're going to have these signs up, we should say, save three dollars by doing this, so people know that. And, and rather than the prices are paying extra to pay cash, what they're really doing is they're getting a discount if they...
To choose online.
Pay online.
And, and the ten dollars was chosen just based on what other districts in the area had done when they made the same transition? That's where that dollar came from?
Now, I'm hearing that the trend is one businesses, they're going in the opposite direction. They want to pay cash, or they'll charge you extra if you credit her.
But I think to your point too, Mr. English, is that, you know, here we're a little bit different with our accounting systems and with thousands of dollars that we're handling, so for us and the auditors, it's really a subpoena for us and most people that are competing with our tickets and counting money.
I wonder, does this system at all talk with our accounting departments?
No, you get a report, and so then you reconcile it with the date and make sure that you enter. But I have used GoFan in the previous district and it works very smoothly.
And one of the things too that I didn't mention is if there's ever like cancellations or things that get rescheduled, GoFan handles all of that, the refunding and that has nothing on our end for, for doing that. They, they take all that on, which I know can be a burden, so that's a nice feature of that particular platform. So you don't have to worry about, uh, any of your, if there's any fraud or chargebacks or anything like that, they, their service department takes care of that for you.
So I'm going to ask you the hard question.
Yeah.
There's someone, they're having trouble with this, who are they calling? Are they calling you, or are they calling GoFan, or does it matter if they're having difficulty using it?
Uh, it doesn't matter, we'd be able to in the activities department to help troubleshoot any of the issues that they're having with it. Um, and if it seems like it's something, again, that would go on one of those exclusive benefits of credit card processing, purchasing, chargebacks, those kinds of things, we would maybe direct them to, to customer service at, at GoFan as well.
This might even have an effect on staffing for events, you know, you know the numbers of people coming then?
You, you, yeah, I had a timer, how many tickets you sold, so, um, a lot of people sometimes will wait till the day of to purchase their ticket to know if they can go, but if they're buying in advance, you have a good idea right away if we're going to have a, a big gate, for sure, indicator.
Well, to the concession stands too, that can be valuable to them. Do you think, um, this is just kind of, do you think this has, makes you more susceptible to like ransomware or anything like that? Happy? Nobody's recorded.
Is GoFan...
GoFan would be the, would be the ones that are responsible for all of that kind of stuff, they wouldn't be on the...
So they're going to be the ones that handle the actual like account information, not us?
Maybe that's, that's what should...
Um, you mentioned a point of sale system with this.
Yeah.
Now, I'll tell you, as someone who almost never carries cash anymore, I love that, and I, I would hope that you're going to be aggressive and implementing that for concessions and other, and other places, uh, around the events, that you can use that because that is a big thing.
Yeah, and that's the, that's what I would, I had a preliminary discussion with the individual that runs the concession stand about getting this up and running, um, as, as something that we could definitely explore to, for sure.
Right.
Yeah, because I think people are just in the habit of just not carrying cash anymore.
I do everything on my watch.
Yep.
And, um, everything, so.
Okay, so I have a question.
Yeah.
We've had a presentation on the fundraising for the weight room. And so how is this process going to turn in with that fundraising?
Yep.
This is the same avenue for that?
Yeah, so we, the proposal before had been using, using, um, Venmo as a, a spot to just put an online link to, to make donations. And we talked with their customer service, which is essentially PayPal, because PayPal owns Venmo, is there was not a way to not attach my personal Venmo account, and just had two of them on there at once. And I just thought, when you're fundraising two hundred fifty thousand dollars, I didn't want any questions asked as to where that money was ever going. Um, so that, this will allow us to, to get away from that. And again, we would, as a, we're thinking a cap of five hundred for a donation through this, because again, there'll be percentage taken. Anything over five hundred dollar donation would be a check written out to, to go onto the booster's account, or that wouldn't be an amount lost. And we just think that's just a way to cast a wide net to get more people that, you know, if you, that maybe you have a tie to Foley or, or something like that, if they want to make a quick donation, just a lot simpler and easier for them to do, so and easy to promote.
So will a person have to create a username on the, a user account on the app?
No.
Or can they do guest checkout?
They can, that's the, that was one of the selling points to, you know, to have to create an account. You don't have to create an account to purchase a ticket, but you can if you want to expedite that process, if you're going to be a frequent customer. The only thing is, and I did ask this question, do you have to type your credit card information every single time? It does not store it, because that's, their, their insurance for fraud has to be way larger if they're storing your, and there is a bill potentially, if they nationwide, get bigger, but as of right now, you have to enter your credit card information every single time.
And so, I wanted my tickets, will there be a spot on our website, like do it on the web, or do I do it on the app, or is it either or?
Either or, yep, so actually if we, you just go to the Foley website or your phone.
But to redeem, I'll have to have it on, the app on my phone?
Or you could print out.
That would be my next question, okay, so that's really what I wanted to know. I'm thinking again, um...
So if you just go to activities calendar.
You know, grandparents and whatnot out there maybe aren't that six and five yet.
Next week, Tuesday, twenty-seventh. So I was playing around with this earlier, so if you're on our activities, okay, our home event for swimming, you click on that, and your buying ticket's right there. Yep, so it'll, it'll all be right there, and then you can see like that on, Malaca uses Venmo, but they're not putting it up. So anytime, um, if you just go back to that little tab, just a little after there. Anytime there's, the online ticketing, just that, that ticket option will pop up right on that, that activities calendar.
One last comment, I was just into a guy, many years ago, and he definitely recognized that name in a famous letter, and he asked him how you could publicly prevent crime forever? He says, get rid of cash, when there will be, there will be crime again.
I had to make some... Any other questions for Mr. English on this?
Thank you for your work.
Alright, so we would need a motion and a second to go forward with the GoFan for online ticketing.
I would make a motion to go forward with everything Mr. English proposed tonight, including, including the pricing options that he gave us for GoFan.
Seconded by Nathan. Okay, motion is made by Patrick, seconded by Nathan, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And we are going to move on to the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five Student Parent Handbook, and it looks like we're going to start with the Foley Elementary School, Mr. English?
Madam Chair, prior to starting, um, I wonder if we could go into the device screen, running an environment presentation first, simply because that will support some of the changes that the principals are recommending, if that would be...
Sure.
And that was, normally it's supposed to be a policy area of this, or is this just part of the...
No, I think this is just separate because one of the things that occurred with, um, the last time the board had discussed this was the why behind this and some of the research as well. So I wanted to be able to share that before the principals had introduced the changes to the handbook. And interestingly enough, I know that you are aware of this, as we've talked about this as a board, that the Minnesota Legislature, that they do require that all school districts in Minnesota, that we do pass a policy on students' possession and use their cell phones. And that needs to be done by March fifteenth of, of next year. And there's a lot of research on, um, the, the, um, the impact and the effects of devices in schools. And I'm going to highlight just three specific areas. One is improving academic performance, and the second we'll be talking about students' mental health, and then finally I like to end with just creating a better classroom environment for our students and for our staff. So looking at, um, improving academic performance, we all know, most of us that have been in classrooms, I know a number of board members have also been in classrooms, and that cell phones can be a large distraction in the classroom, not only to students, but also to staff having to correct behavior, having students put their cell phones away. And I have a couple of different resources that I found that are really interesting, that students who frequently use their cell phones in class have a lower academic performance. And again, it's that adolescent brain that isn't able to handle tasks, to listen to what the teachers say, being involved in classroom discussion, and again, that's showing in their performance academically. And again, that multitasking, and, and today, I can speak from experience, I was texting, um, I think a board member, and I'm trying to look at something on my computer, was sending it for an email out to staff, and I'm talking to Kelly at the same time, and made a mistake, and it's just that multitasking at that level, and I think for all of us that, um, we struggle with retention and understanding. I'm looking ahead then at, um, enhancing mental health. And our mental health, um, we've seen that excessive phone use can be linked to both increased anxiety and stress. And you look at social media, so for those of you that have children around the table still, and in the audience, you know that it's important how many likes a student receives on, um, a post on Instagram, or being concerned that they haven't received a response from someone right away, and just the constant of being, I think, I think just being on and in, in straight communication with their peers at all times. And, and again, um, there's research that supports that too, with that constant level of needing to be connected and connected to... and connected to social media that's led to, um, mental health issues. And the final bit of research is some clinical psychological science. And they have reported in 2022 that students who use cell phones during class are more likely to experience social isolation as well as a higher increase in depression or poor depression. And then finally, on creating a, a better classroom environment, we know that, um, cell phones disrupt the classroom. I think of all of us that, um, are in the trenches every day when we've been in a classroom, we've heard a cell phone ring or a beep or a buzz or something that has happened. And it stops the flow of the classroom. So whether it's distracting students, it's distracting the adults because the adults have to manage the behavior. And then just another couple more resources with the Journal of Computers in Education. They reported that cell phones lead to potentially increases of incidence of cheating as well as reduced participation in classroom discussions. And again, that's linked back to academic achievement. And then finally, the last article that I like to share is from Education Science. And this is more recent in 2024, that cellphone policies can improve the learning environment by promoting more face-to-face interactions amongst students. And I think again, um, what's important to us, and I think the principals will talk more in detail about this, is that you know, our, our charge is really to provide a learning environment for our students. We want our students to be able to concentrate academically. And the one thing that I think is important for the board to remember as the principals are, um, talking to about and and sharing their proposed changes in their handbook, this is really ground level work. And this is, um, uh, this is coming from our staff, from our teachers, and each of the building leadership teams. This is where this is started from. So as the principals are presenting to you, please keep in mind that this particular change has been embedded through their building leadership team. So there's boards within their buildings.
I agree with all of these things, but I should point out last fall when I was at the NSBA Legislative Assembly, which was made up entirely of board members, about 100 board members around the state, that resolution came up to be presented for the state legislature and we loudly voted no.
I, I think this is one issue we, you, um, I think it's hard to say that government's very divided, but this is a non-person issue. And, and I do believe that it's why is, um, and I would hope that the principals would agree, this has to be done. And it makes sense to do it in the beginning of a school year rather than change patterns of behaviors once March comes along. And probably the next question you would have is if the board adopts the changes to the handbook, will we need to communicate this out to families? And luckily, um, we're not the only school district that is moving towards this direction. There's more that are than that aren't. So there's a lot of great, um, social media examples already. I've had a chance to talk with our communications specialist about how we would push this out and start with social media and then also follow up with a letter to our parents too. So we would hope that that would be, our, our target would be one C to push that out.
Um, I know when we were kind of work session, I think it was, or we talked about this months ago, and I, I was like, hmm, I myself, but so, um, I, when I started talking to teachers and asking and, you know, between subs and yay, the teacher's in the attitude, this, this is all exactly what they said. So I, I, I completely come around and I happen to have changed my mind because I thought that I was, thought my attention given a chance to change my mind.
And, and I do believe that, you know, there's accommodations for students that need. So for example, we do have some students that have a medical need, so it is necessary for them to have their cell phones. And so we have that written, um, suggested policy to that if a student has a medical reason for having their cell phone on their person, that they would still be able to have their cell phone. And I think ultimately, going back to your point too, Patrick, is that we want our teachers to be able to teach. And we know that there's some natural behaviors that teachers are going to have to manage. But if we can take away some of those extra things that to make it easier for them and then to make the academic learning environment better, that's something that we should be doing for our students.
I know what parents say. They say, we need to be in touch with our kids at all times. And as a former teacher, I agree with all, heartily. I just don't, I know how difficult it's going to be in the course, so, you know?
So.
I agree, you have to have students attached to the teaching, otherwise it's not gonna, not gonna work, but I hope it's enforceable.
You, you know what's a horrible thing that was said to me by parents? Might kind of bring it up though? It wasn't at all times. It was in the event of a disaster or something happens, they want to be able to call and know, they want to be able to reach your kid and know their kid is safe, which is, I mean, that's, it's scary, right? I mean, that's, and I understand that as, as a parent, you know, we always want to be able to like, oh, we have this thing now, I can, I can check, I can check it and reach my kid and ask my kid, are you safe? But, um, at the same time, I mean, they're trusting us with their, with the safety of their students. And we're doing our, I, the, I say we as a district, but we as a district are doing our best and, you know, we're, we're gonna do our best to keep them safe. And that's, but I mean, that's, that was like, ultimately like, when you kind of like, what's the other shoe, what's the clothes? That's what it is. It's like, but okay, it's enough. What are you going to do? You can't reach them. What are you, you know? If there was like a, a fire or something, it's not like you could run into the burning building as, as a parent and, and, you know, we're, we don't live in, in like a movie in Hollywood or something where one glowing person can can run in through amazing circumstances and say, why? And it's just, uh, so I, I, I think that's where a lot of that trepidation really comes from, is there's, is there the fear? And this was giving people away have a feeling of control or someone uncontrollable. And I think as we are communicating new things, that is something to keep in mind is what is the real concern a lot of, mostly, not everyone, but I think mostly it comes from, I want to know if my kid is safe at all times. And this was my one way I thought I had to do it. But we can't ever know if it's 100% safe, sadly.
And that, that's a really good point because the one thing that, um, crisis management situation and our protocols that we wouldn't want parents calling cell phones because we want the lines to be open so that we're communicating with law enforcement and other emergency personnel.
I'd be caught long before cell phones ever came in. I never solved problems of any parent ever getting a hold of you.
No.
What's that?
If that is mine, I just wanted to do a, first or before, we heard from the principals, we had a bit of background before that they present their changes.
All right, so we'll go forward with the elementary school. Thank you.
Mr. Irvin, um, there aren't a lot of changes to the Foley Elementary Handbook, um, won't be the cell phone, personal device policy, will be, or procedures, we'll get to. Um, but what you'll see is if there's a change, it's the new language is in blue with the old language you'd strike out. So the first is a change that I actually implemented last year, just been had in the handbook. Um, students are allowed in at 7:50. It used to be 7:55. Um, so now we just, uh, made the language in the handbook reflect what we're actually doing. Um, there's the same thing there. There's just a few grammatical things, um, going, that's all very much the same. Um, there's our cell phone and other personal electronic device section for the elementary school. And, um, so we broadened it out to include not just cell phones, but other electronic devices. So for example, smart watches, fitness tractors, headphones, um, at the elementary school. The device that we see students trying to use during the student day more than cell phones is a smart watch. And they have very much, if not the same capability as a cell phone. So that's why we broadened it out to include those devices. Um, and we talked about in our school, when a student, if a student brings a device like that, they should store it in their locker when they get to school. And at the end of the day, when the teacher is giving the class ready to go, they can get their device back out and wear it home. But during the student day, it really should be put in their locker and put away and stored for the day. Um, and if a student doesn't follow that process, kind of what our, um, what our response will be, the device will get confiscated, turned into the office, we'll have a student pick it up at the end of the day. Um, if it continues to happen, we'll call the parent, make sure they're aware and work out a plan for how we're gonna resolve that issue. Okay? Um, let's keep going. Next page. This is an added chart we added this year. We had this chart uh, for a few years at Foley Elementary, but now it's put in the handbook. Um, and basically what it explains is how different student behaviors are handled. Minor versus a major, a, a small behavior versus a large behavior, what those could look like, what are possible responses from school staff and who can handle minor behaviors versus major behaviors. And, um, emergency closing, just a little change in language. Um, we still want students and parents to work out an emergency closing plan, but we just changed our language a little bit. And, um, water bottles, snack break, same thing. We took out one section of notice of parent. Um, we still have classrooms that do Friday folders, but not all classrooms do. So if a teacher does a Friday folder for paper pencil communication, they can still do that, but um, not all students or not all classrooms communicate in that way. Um, report cards is gonna be a little different. Um, in the past, we've printed out paper copies of all report cards for all students every trimester. This year, um, we're gonna start using Infinite Campus a little bit more, a little bit utilizing more of its postal system. So, um, parents will be able to access their kids' report card online versus having to wait until a paper copy gets sent home. We'll still print a paper copy if a parent wants it, if they request it, but that's not gonna be, um, our standard procedure. That's it. End of the sheet.
I just got one thing I'm getting about the, uh, bringing of things like watches and cell phones.
Yep.
I, I concerned when, when, when cell phones first came out, they would get you stolen all the time. You know, is, is the kid gonna be able to go back to his locker and check and see if he's gotten anything before he goes back to the classroom? I mean, probably shouldn't even be allowed in the school, not even come into work.
That would be our preferences, don't even bring it. Uh, but that's a hard thing for us to try and force.
I know.
Yeah.
So what, I, I want to ask about the why of this, that school deserves the right to, yeah, refuse excusing an absence when requests become excessive. One student has 10 absences, all, once a student has 10 absences, all future absences will be considered unexcused unless medical documentation signed by the health staff. But, um, it says that they're gonna go to the county social services at 7:00. Why, why don't we make that the same?
Because the county has, um, we have to report and work with our families at different absence levels. So we'll do a 3, 5, and a 7, uh, communication with both the parent. And then when it gets to the 7:00 unexcused, that's a county, uh, um, educational neglect referral for students RH, for all and under, it's an educational neglect. Um, so that, we're required to make that, that contact with the county.
But then we still allow 10. I mean, we still allow 10 before we refuse to.
Yep.
But then it's a few excuse that.
Yeah, the 7:00 is the unexcused absences. So we have a student that is absent for 10 days. And then we're seeing that those absences are excessive, so 11, 12, 13, 14. And we're not sure why. That's when we can request adopters, you know, really for any of our absences.
But the county could, if I write.
I think, I think every, I think every situation is, is different. Because if there is a family that has community involvement, um, there are situations where we have to submit on a weekly basis the attendance, whether we have 7:00 unexcused or 2:00 absences. They're just tracking to make sure that the parent is following through on, on their end, whatever the county is requiring, if you're deemed.
You know, I, I can say from personal experience last year, my daughter did middle school. Last year was a bad year. She got sick and she missed a week of school. It was five and she'd been sick a few times prior to that. We did that 10 and, you know, we got that, I think, think, yeah, well, she, she had missed a lot. This is a kid that missed, I think, maybe one day, uh, all the four or five years prior to that. So, uh, but like, I'm not, you know, I'm glad someone's watching though. That was kind of how I felt about it.
And I think sometimes when we watch the attendance, that may drive parents to say, gee, they've been gone already this sunny day. It's, I don't know if we should do this certain trip because academically, they're starting to fall behind. And that's what we really try to watch. Two, because it's stressful for kids to be gone for five, six days because the work doesn't stop.
Are we anticipating passing each handbook as we go or at the end together?
I would recommend passing it all together.
Each as we go? Okay.
I would, I would do it all together, yeah.
All together.
All together. I don't think you need to do them separately because it's a wonderful document.
So now we, we're okay to move on to the Foley Elementary?
Very good.
Good evening, everybody. Fun handbook talk for everybody. So in our meeting school, we are looking at, uh, our, our cell phone policy also, updating masks, uh, we're looking to do a wave per day. So what that looks like is, as you have seen your, um, documents, we'd be asking students not to have their cell phones out from 8 o'clock until 2:50 on our school day. And we ask, ask our students to have their, um, cell phones in their lockers, actually not with them. We also know that research has shown that if they have them with them, they feel that buzz, it's a distraction and kind of wondering, gosh, what's going on? Am I missing? You know, so we are going on, what most middle schools are doing in the area, um, as far as doing the wave per day. So that would be a significant change. We have communication ready to go with parents and families, um, if this were to be approved. Uh, to let everybody know, as Dr. Perry mentioned also, we'll get, uh, blast these out of social media and make sure we get, leave that message out. So everyone knows what the next steps are in the handbook. Our next change, um, uh, under attendance, we put a little statement in there about, uh, the authority to decide whether an absence is excused or unexcused, rest of the administration. Um, sometimes as we're talking about earlier with attendance and stuff, it gets to be a little tricky and stuff. So we just want to make sure we put that language in there that, that we have to finally say, we're gonna accept that the absence or not. I just want to back up just a little bit, getting back to the cell phone talk. Um, I just want to mention our building did about six months worth, worth of work researching, um, cell phones. That, that's something that came out from our teachers, concern that they had that, that threw this at a learning, uh, learning environment. So we literally took six months to investigate that, research that as BLT by backdoor staff. And they really do feel strongly about, um, the cell phone language that we propose for our handbook. Um, really improving the, uh, learning environment for our students. One of the things that, you know, sometimes if you hear something that really resonates, kind of sticks with you, I just remember one of our, one of our staff members mentioning that, you know, this student's getting like a one or two, you know, if they didn't have their cell phone, didn't have that distraction, I know they have three or four. You know, and I think that's telling about the distraction that that cell phone had for that student. And I, that's not isolated. Um, current, I think that happens more often than our students. So sorry about that, but we can do a lot of work as, as a building. Another highlight for our handbook that we're looking at adding is just the truancy language. Basics, put in safe section language in, in our handbook, just so everyone's communicating clearly. This isn't a top was, different levels as far as when we report to the county, when we report it to parents. And then finally, uh, one of the things we're looking at really tightening up this year, um, in our new school, it's came from our staff also. Um, tardies, um, student tardies have gotten to be an issue. Kids kind of, you know, known around always, not getting to class on time. So we are looking at tightening that up a little bit. Um, as you can see, the strikeouts. One of the things, we don't really do a lot of detention, so we want to make sure we're using our planning room in accordance with access to help kind of teach the appropriate behaviors for students. So we did set this going from, um, now the second time we'll link to detention, we want to make sure we involve our planning rooms so that, um, we're kind of teaching the proper behaviors for our students. So we will get that detention, um, pointing to after a few different, hopefully after, hopefully after just one time, we want to do that for that. Uh, but if it does get to be a recurring problem, we do have more of a step as far as going to the planning room and then detention, then looking at access. So those are the few, but major changes we're looking at as far as.
Are there any questions, um, from the board regarding any of the school handbook change?
How much time do students have between classes?
Um, for some, maybe three, look, they have three minutes.
Those are all clustered really close together. The only exception is by, like, they go to the van or.
Right. And even that, you've timed it and you can, you can get. Right, and even that, you've timed it, and you can get from van room over to Mr. Drescher's room in all of the minutes and 15 seconds if you. If you, you know, I don't know if it's my socializing.
Are the students, are they, I can't remember, so I forget my memory here. But are they allowed to have like backpacks during the day to carry their stuff with them?
It's like, it's depending on the grade level and depending on the teacher. There's always a difference. So we prefer them to be in their lockers, not got backpacks with them. Again, it's a little distracting.
I'm just thinking about carrying things in classes. I don't think of people running from one place to another.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we will move on to the high school, Mr. Fass.
So, okay, I'll start off with cellphones. Our BLT has done quite a good work in this area. What we're not delivering such a pass, this law, this was going to be our proposal, was to not allow cellphones during class. We're going to allow them in the hallways, not lunch. Our feeling is, if all we do is completely ban everything, we're not teaching them to be responsible. So we've got to kind of phase it in as they get older, whether they're going to college, getting a job, whatever it is. Cellphones aren't going away, so they need to be taught somewhat responsibly. So we're going to help them do that. So that's, that's our cellphone proposals, that they will not be available to be used during the school hour or during the class hour. But in the past, in time, parents need to communicate, I guess, you have teenage drivers and these sorts of things, you want to be in contact, they have sporting events, a change. So that's the first. The second change, just adding the winter formal to allow guests. We've been allowing it for the past couple of years, even though it wasn't stated in here and some of these questions, so I just wanted to put it in there so it's stated that way. Dress appearance, proposing to allow hats to be worn in school. Couple of years ago, legislature passed one called the Crown Act, where certain ethnicities and different religions can wear head coverings. So every year I get questions of, well, why can that person wear something but I can't? Well, I don't want to be the delineator between what can and what can't. And again, we, staff have been, we talked about this at length. Cellphones might be part of that. Well, are we going to battle cellphones and hats? Or pick our battle and have cellphones? Make that kind of a priority. Looking at the graduation ceremony, we're in the kind of the third year of phasing in the trimesters. So just changing things to be set for the trimesters. You can see the 48 credits by the conclusion. We took out the grad year, 24 and, well, 25 and beyond because it's now 25 and beyond all the time. So just changing that to get it updated for trimesters. The media center used to open from 7:30 to 3:50. Goes back to when the computer lab was attached to. Kids needed to be able to get into a computer lab to do their work at times. Not only without a Chromebook, they can be wherever they want to be and be doing that. So tightening those hours down, actually did that last year during the year. Just putting it in the handbook. And then senior privileges, senior privileges were something that was tied to study halls. We haven't had study halls since before I was here because the language was still in there. Seniors were able to do things and leave the building at different times. When they had study hall, if they don't have a study hall, it's kind of an uneven way. Updating that. And then the last one is just tie this, the device of the teacher, the first time it's taken away rather than the office for the day. So along with the policy, we changed to the discipline matrix. Yes?
Going back to the cellphones. You said they can use the classroom, but they can't hold, can they have in their pocket?
Yes.
Because that's, as you're.
It's going to be tempting. We have bought calculator holders that teachers can put, and if a teacher wants to have all students put them there, they can. We have teachers that haven't allowed cellphones for a couple of years. They have a policy and a system that works for them that didn't have them putting them up there. So I'm not going to make that teacher put them up there if they have something that works.
I'm just going to say, as Chris pointed out, that sometimes it did vibrate to the five, it's still distracting.
Yep.
I actually do appreciate that this transition in this time with the cellphones. One, in the Google Classroom, like I know my son, when I was a senior, he lived in Google Classroom on his phone, so it was key contracted everywhere. He came in, obviously, the Chromebooks came in just halfway through his time, but it was really nice because we also were on the Google Classroom with him, you could see that. But also for him, the calendar aspect, and learning to use his phone as, and like the agendas are used at the intermediate school, I thought was a very important skill for him that he gained in high school that he does use now at college. And so I do appreciate that they have to learn to use the smartphone because that really did happen for my son. He learned how to use his phone, not just for entertainment and distraction, but for actually being productive.
Any other questions? Thank you.
And then after, just to clarify, I would recommend passing, having a motion for the parent-student handbook, and then doing a separate motion for child nutrition and then athletics, which they're very different.
Okay, that's fine. Thanks for clarifying that, that was my question with us, but we will do it. And I just want to add one comment that I have been in contact with the Kimball School District, and I've been looking at their social media posts out to their community and students in their school community. And they are doing a top-notch job with promoting their no-use-of-cellphone. So I would, we don't need to reinvent the wheel. I mean, we can kind of look to see what they're doing in other schools in our area and push that on as well. And I think that the state legislative body is on the right page with this, 150%. And I think we'll be thanked with increased student achievement, which is one of our values here. So I would need a motion and a second to approve the handbooks as stated.
Motion to approve the handbooks as stated.
Okay.
Motion by Patrick, seconded by Nathan. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And so Sharon, do you have child nutrition?
Yes, this is part of the student handbook. So just updating it, last year and continuing this year, meals are free for all kids in the state of Minnesota. So we updated that in the yellow. And then Minnesota Department of Ed also tells us what we charge our adults, which we have to charge at least that much or more. And this is what they have for this year as far as $2.50 for breakfast, and adult lunches are $5. The strikeout is the old civil rights statement, and the new one is put in that is underlined. And this is the updated civil rights statement as well from the Minnesota Department of Ed. This needs to be on all child nutrition materials that are sent out to parents. And then the other page is our lunch charge procedures as far as, even though students receive free meals, if they bring a meal from home, they have to pay for their carton of milk. They, with the free meal, it has to be a reimbursable meal, which is at least three items, and one is a fruit or vegetable. So if they want to have just a carton of milk, it is $0.50. So it isn't covered. We tried to get that passed in legislation this year, but it did not happen. And then we also have an all cart program where kids can purchase extra items for all cart or after-school snack. So they have to have money in their account. Last year, we put no charges on the account. I mean, no negative balances. If you have a negative balance, you can't purchase anything. And that did go pretty well. My cashier did quite well with being served with it. It's not easy, but it is what it is. We do notify electronically as far as when the household reaches $10. And then it's going to continue until they put money into the account. And payments can be made by credit card or online with Infiniti Campus, or they can remit to the offices and it will be put in. And then all food can be brought into the lunchroom from an outside restaurant. If that happens, I'm under the understanding that they go someplace else to eat, not into the cafeteria. Any questions?
I have one comment. Now that we have a governor that's sitting on the national scene, he seems to be getting knocked by a lot of opponents for the free lunch program. What's your feeling?
I'm actually not certain if that's pertaining to our education program, honestly.
No, no, I'm just saying, I believe it's been a good thing for students.
Right. However, there's other people that don't feel that way, I'm not going to comment on that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
So we do need a motion, separate on the child nutrition. Can we still attach a statement by Lucy?
I'll make one for the first.
Second. Motion by Nathan, seconded by Sharon. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And we also have the 2024, 2025 Student Parent Activity Handbook.
All right, I do apologize, I did make changes too, I didn't highlight them. So we're going to, I have been going through it, we're going to stop. Most of the changes that went through in the activities handbook, some of them were just updating. The teams that are within the Grand Ridge Conference are current coaches and advisors in addition to some subtle terminology changes. The biggest change we discussed at the last board meeting was the fee increase structure and some of the things that came along with that. So that's now reflected within the handbook as well. In this section here, you know, we did add girls wrestling last year. So that was added in to that girls athletics programs that we offer here in Foley. Again, the $20 increase was reflected on all of those as well as the, there's no longer the pay now option, or pay later option, excuse me, when registering. So when someone registers for an activity, they register and pay at the same time. They don't have the option to pay later on down the road. In addition to that, just some subtle changes around the FIS, intermediate school academic policy. Just changed it to reflect the high school one a little bit more, that we're doing it four times a year. The high school one, we do it 13. It didn't feel necessary to have the exact dates in there, even though the ones that were in there weren't accurate. The high school one will change somewhat to just align with midterms and those kinds of things so that we're not running reports, you know, a few days apart. And so now the intermediate school policy will reflect that they run it four times a year and not just specific dates as well. It's a ways down the middle. So there are the fee updates and changes there for all of our activities we discussed last board meeting. The other, the other little changes, there's a portion in there that you scroll when you put the ways down, that refers to parents attending an all-activities meeting in the hall. We're going to be offering that meeting three times this year for an opportunity. If you have a student that's only in activities in the winter or only in the spring, the parents will have the opportunity to come and go through some of the finer points of the Minnesota State High School rules as well as the parent and student handbook as well, with myself.
It's an opportunity for a question or comment on some of the.
No, no, you're good, come on in.
Okay, so in the past, that was a one-time thing, the fall.
Yep.
So I think it's a step in a great way to offer it.
Yeah, and then the fall meeting was recorded and we shared it out with parents as well. And then the idea would be just to have a winter and a spring evening, and then a parent, a coach meeting after that to follow too. So I'm committed to come in and go through the expectations of the specific activities that you're involved in as well.
Eric. Well, I have a page here in the thing, Grand Ridge Conference Sportsmanship Creed Rules.
Yes.
Three places it mentions the word cheerleaders. Are they recognized by the Minnesota State High School?
They still are. There are not a lot of schools that have active cheerleaders.
But isn't part of the high school league, they're not, you know, they used to be.
Yeah, they're not as, I'm trying to think, there's not as visible and there aren't as many schools that still have a set cheer squad like they used to. But there are still enough to read.
So that can be there. And then further down on that page, it says masks or costumes that disguise identity are not permitted. What about the mascot? Don't some schools have mascots?
There are, I do believe there are specific mascot exemptions in there. It talks about when and where the mascot can be. And it's restricted to the cheer area as well. So that would not pertain to the mascot.
And on page 99, Foley Felton Student Athletic Checklist and Expectations. A student must be fully enrolled. Can you define what fully enrolled is?
Yes.
Do you want me to help you add?
I've got, but if you want to go in. So there's, if you're at a high school level, you're taking courses either, it's depending on if we're claiming you for the paid, I believe.
So to be fully enrolled means you have to be a resident of Foley School District. Or if you are fully enrolled, so we have, for example, Malaca students that are fully enrolled into Foley Public Schools, they participate in our activities. If we have a homeschool family that's in the district, they also can participate in our activities.
Correct. All, most secondaries students that are within the Foley district are also eligible.
So you may ask the question, what happens if we have a homeschool family that's in Malaca, for example? Can they participate in Foley Public Schools? No, they participate in Malaca's activities.
Our grandkids that are now involved in activities, it seems that your fees are fairly reasonable compared to what they're facing in a lot of schools.
They're quite lower here. But also, they also run into things, quarters, selling quarters for savings books and things like this, they do all this stuff, everything else that has to be fundraised.
I think anything that they're fundraising has to go through the school board, is that right?
Anything a specific team has to, given for fundraising, has to come through the board, yes.
Okay. Expectation as a Foley Felton parent guardian, I agree to, one of the highlights are discourage the use and inform my student about the dangers of drugs, alcohol, and tobacco. I think we need to find a stronger word than discourage. You know, we just, we need a stronger word there, but.
Well, to be fair though, it also says that if a student uses it, that there are consequences.
Right.
You know, kids get discouraged by something from their parents, that means they won't do it.
And on page 105, Sunday Practices. Minnesota State High School League by law prevents the scheduling of practice games, meetings, scrimmages, or pictures on a Sunday for all league sponsors activities. Does that in any way have anything to do with an edge excellence?
No.
I haven't read through this, it's clearly that I should have, but I know that probably when Joel was in school, if you were caught drinking, it was the whole season. Is that right?
It was an eight-week violation, which in a nine-week football season, yes.
Well, yeah, and then even before you, it was a whole season. Where's the state high school league, maybe six weeks or something like that?
So a first offense is two weeks or two events, whatever's longer. And then the second offense is three weeks or six events, whatever's.
The quality, it should be the first event.
So we implement the Minnesota State High School policy.
Any other questions from Mr. Davis? Thank you. So I look for a motion and a second on the 2024, 25 Student Parent.
Motion, what's that?
Second.
Motion by Ken, seconded by Patrick. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We have the identified official with authority. It's, I think it's Iowa Resolution. And this is something that we have to do every year, I believe.
That is correct.
And so it's the time of the year to take care of that. And it's in your packet on page 11. And it's in your packet of page 14, and it designates the superintendent as this individual. And it will be signed, assigned to a permit that we have to have on that.
Obviously, it wouldn't use that after.
Iowa?
It seems like it's kind of making it specific.
All right, was there any discussion on this, otherwise I'd look for a motion and a second on that.
Motion approved. Second.
Motion by Nathan, seconded by Wayne, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. And we have a letter of understanding with the custodial contract regarding Juneteenth, which is also discussion action. Superintendent Perry, you go ahead and sign on that form.
Sure, with the addition of adding Juneteenth as the holiday, there is not much guidance. And what we were informed with MSBA is that we treat that holiday as like it is Fourth of July. However, as part of it, it's necessary work. And so the custodial staff felt that the work that they're doing in the summer to clean the building is necessary work. So we did work with the SEIU membership, or their union person, Riker, along with our union steward, and we came to an agreement that employees were concerned that they lost a day of work since that is a negotiated holiday for custodial unit. It is for others that are working though, in the summer for negotiations. And if employees wanted to use, they could use the SST tender or other almanacs that we that they could use to be compensated on, again, if concerned that they lost a few times. So our union then came that if employees wanted to work additional, that they would need to let us know by September 1st and then complete 8 hours. And then that way we would basically put their rebate as whole again. And just to inform the board that the union does have to vote on any type of memorandum of understanding. And this was ratified by the union as well. So would be my recommendation to have a motion to pass as that's presented.
Thank you, are there any questions regarding this? Otherwise, I would take a motion and a second for the old custodial contract regarding Juneteenth.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Stephanie, seconded by Patrick, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. We have the superintendent review, and it's up for discussion in the purple. Just to recap, for records and for our audience and those viewing at home, we did as a board, complete an evaluation on Dr. Perry. The standard we used was a goals and standard-based superintendent evaluation, and it was through the Minnesota School Board Association. We had two meetings, and we did a survey monkey to... As a board, we were able to do some ratings, some comments, et cetera. And we did have a very good discussion at both of our meetings. And we kind of started out with some brainstorming on what we felt as a board was priority to be valuing it on. And so that's kind of what we did our first session. And then the second session was to set some goals and such in collaboration with Dr. Perry. Patrick, did you want to add anything around that?
We chose the MSBA for this go-around simply because we haven't done... This was the first superintendent evaluation since I joined the board four years ago, between COVID and the end of, and then we kind of came out of that with Mr. Newbauer. So since we hadn't done it for a while, or we wanted, we just needed to have a system in place, which is why we chose this. I had participated in the training. Chairmanwoman Howard had also done some training with it previously. So it just seemed like the easiest way to get us going. We're not like locked into anything for further evaluations as we go, but this is a good place for us to start the conversation. It is also part of our board norms that we agreed on as a board to have a yearly evaluation of the superintendent, a formal evaluation like this. But we also do have a check-in around February, I think it is. And we did that as well last February. And really, what a lot of this comes down to is setting these goals. And the idea is that hopefully we're checking in in February, see how the goals are going. Do we need to adjust things, are there things we need to help on, or you know, that sort of thing. So that it's not like, once a year we're going to talk and everything. We're really trying to make this a collaborative process. And I had to sadly leave halfway through the meeting, because I had another obligation that night. But at least a half I was there, I felt it was a very good collaborative conversation. And I think in that respect, it was exactly everything I had hoped for of this process that we were working on it.
Thank you, and so at this time of this kind of recap, the evaluation, and just kind of going by what the board had decided as priorities to evaluate. So the policy implementation was one. And that was scored as effective. And consult the school board with questions, policy, notification, and follow school board policy. We also felt it was important to evaluate budget development and maintenance. And that was also categorized as effective and engages in proactive budget actions that consider current information and data, seeks to balance, to meet the students' needs, and be fiscally responsible to our community, distributes resources in wider school district goals and immediate objectives. We also talked about relationships within the community, and that was based as effective and creates relationships with public and private sectors. We also talked about informing the community as a whole, and that was viewed as developing. And, you know, working on keeping community members informed of school district issues and concerns. Another item of discussion was collective bargaining, and that is also developing. I mean, we had our first go-around with that this year. We also had a topic of conversation, professional knowledge of teaching and learning. And that was effective, demonstrates knowledge of current and structural programs and is able to discuss them, seeks to learn and improve upon personal and professional abilities. And we also touched on supporting the students and deemed that as developing, academics, support services, extracurricular activities, and accommodations to meet students' range of learning needs, to create trusting, safe, inclusive, and respected school environment, and sustainable for most students. We talked about ethics and professional behavior. And that was consistently models high standards of ethical and professional behavior, including courage and integrity, guide staff to articulate and reinforce high ethical and professional expectations for school district staff, and interacts with stakeholders in a professional, respectful, trustworthy manner. We had interactions with staff, student, and community. And this was our final item of topic to discuss. And also as developing, and frequently examine school district procedures and practices for adherence to principles of fairness and human dignity and works to make the best of union relationships. So that was the extent of our evaluation, which was a lot of really good work. And I thank the board for their participation and their willingness to have great discussion and getting the surveys in. And our second area that has to do with the evaluations were agreed upon goals. And so those are on the screen. And these are kind of smart goals that we kind of developed as a group in collaboration with Dr. Perry. Do you want to respond on any of those, or?
I don't think I need to. Unless there's any other questions.
Well, just to reiterate that, you know, looking at the, this is the 2024-2025 school year that we were really honing in on. And so, of course, we're going to, you know, work with our rehab, which is the in-house trainer, Kristy Brown is the instructor for that. So that is, that is going to be key for this school year. And then looking at the community engagement, and we have some changes coming up. So we want to look at Facebook and website changes and, you know, have some positive control with the narrative. And also reporting to the board by communities within the district. Those are listed there, PBIS, Nat Science, College and School. And we also have, our third goal is our indoor air quality project. I'm not sure what to exactly call it, but it's going to change for our district. It adds to a lot of resources. And so that is going to be really prioritized this school year as well. And then working on job descriptions was another priority that we kind of set as well. Does anybody have anything to add on the next?
I just wanted to say that, you know, every year, you know, hopefully what we're going to see in our evaluation set is be looking, the goals should help drive that. When I was doing the training, to mention this for anyone that's watching at home or in our audience, I, the idea really is that, you know, the board has one main responsibility, kind of at the top of their responsibilities, that is to hire and help manage the superintendent. And of course, if anyone has ever had a job, you know, one of the things goes with managing is setting goals, right? So the board kind of has this part here, we work with the superintendent to set these goals. The goal should help drive the next piece, right? It should, you know, if you look at these things, Facebook website, does this mean we've set the goal that Dr. Perry is going to be the person updating the website, updating Facebook? No, it means Dr. Perry, it's buck stops with her, so to speak, as far as the board's concerned, but she's going to be delegating this to members of the team here at Foley Public Schools to help accomplish this goal. Same with all these committees and everything, like the IAQ project, right? But the idea is that we're giving a set of goals, that we're saying, these are the things that are, we're seeing as important for the next fiscal year. Dr. Perry has to accomplish these, we want to see these things get accomplished, that's why we have check-ins. How she does it, you know, she's having, she's delegating, that's up to her. I hope she's delegating, because she's got a lot of responsibilities in general. So that's where this all starts. And as, if you think about it as a snowball, as the snowball gets rolling, we get a few years into this, right? Some of these might be multi-phase, multi-year type goals. Where we're going to have to break it down, okay, well, this is a big project. What are we, what can we accomplish over the next 12 months? And that's going to feed into a goal for the next 12 months. And that's going to be, right? And so let's say now, there's something that's not going well. We're going to have that February check-in, and Dr. Perry's going to come in, and she's going to say, you know, I've been trying to work with Benton County News, trying to, you know, I can't do a weekly column. You know, that's, that was something, you know, Paul Newbauer was really good at, and good on him. You know, but she's like, right now with the IAQ project and all these other things, I'm having trouble. Oh, you know, well, then we say, okay, well, then we can help advise, you know. We say, well, well, how about, you know, leaning on some members of your team, you know, and having like an elementary one, we can, an intermediate one, you know, things like, so we can help give advice. And so when February comes, then she's not alone. We're all in this together. That's our, that's kind of the method behind the madness, or the madness behind the method, I guess, depending on how you look at it with what we're doing.
All right, and I will need a motion and a second to accept our superintendent review.
Motion approved.
Motion by Nathan, seconded by Wayne, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. And we have next contracts for community education staff. Hi, Lee. Um, I remain all the same order in a packet.
My order is coordinator of school age care first. And I think that would be your order as well. And I believe he'll take his contract right potential for a motion, is that correct? Then I'll stop, I want to keep moving on then.
No, that's fine, we can do it that way, as individuals, because that's what they're listed here.
Perfect. This position, if you remember, this was a new position. And so we didn't have to adjust the funding for the 23-24 school year, but we need forward for the 24-25 school year. And I should also say that with community education, this is a different fund. And so we really had to work quite hard on looking at what the community education fund could support in terms of increases in wage wages. And I have to say that Alyssa Stewart, a community education director, was very helpful in helping gather data for us especially, so that we knew comparables to area schools as well. So looking at the terms of funding, and the other thing we had to adjust prior, and we have this contract as salary base, but there's a salary threshold for exempt employees and select bed increase, you know, decrease in July.
And you mean that's under statute, for you to follow?
That is statute, we have to follow that, yeah, that's all, that's all. So we had to adjust that to an hourly wage. And so it equates still, the employee works 260 days and is a full-time eight-hour position. So we did increase the hourly wage to $23.18. We did increase our Thor pre-B matches. And then we also added Juneteenth as a holiday. And then we also increased insurance to match where we place other insurance contributions with like positions as well. So that's the coordinator of school age care.
So do you have a percentage increase?
Erin, as a 3% increase on wage and total package. Erin, confirm a little.
While they're looking at, I'm trying to like say that I was working on this committee that had with all three of these. And I, great conversations were had, and so these are from the committee as well for our patients.
So I need a motion and a second on the coordinator of school age care program support contract.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Patrick, seconded by Stephanie, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Next, I have community ed wraparound care supervisor, that's why I have this too.
Okay.
Okay. So this is a program for extension of the learning day for students. And currently, the services is 180 days. And looking at this year, we increased the wage by 3%. And this employee was working seven and a half hours per day this year. And the board committee that was involved, I think, I hate to speak for the three of you, but we really learned quite a bit about each of these programs. So it was really a great discussion, and I think we learned quite a bit about what happens in wraparound, wraparound care. And one of the proposals that the employee had come forward with is increasing from a 7.5-hour day to an 8-hour day. And did a great job of explaining the reason why, because we didn't know. Preschool being back-to-back, this particular person just didn't have any time to prep for students. She had a lunch break, and that was it. And we felt that making this investment in this program to give a teacher, a staff member, she's not a licensed teacher, but the preschool wraparound supervisor additional time, we felt that was very important, important. And so for 24-25 school year, we've increased... And so for 24, 25 school year, we've increased the amount of time hourly. So it's from 7.5 hours to eight hours. And then the increase on salary is three percent. And this employee at one time, she received the holidays and no floating holidays. I think she was the only person in the district that did not have a floating holiday. So the board committee, they did agree to add floating holiday. And the other thing I believe in this, in this terms of employment, I don't believe she had a 403, this employee, right? There was no 403 B match as well. And so again, we thought that was important to add because every other employee in the district does have a 403 B match. Insurance, we stayed the same at eighty six eleven for last year, 23, 24. And then again, when we poured to 24, 25, we increased to ninety, ninety-four. And Erin, I think my percentage is different from you, so I'm going to trust your percentage increase.
Total package for two years is a 12.28% increase. So year one is a 2.39%, year two is a 9.90%. And it was still only a three percent increase on the salary. It's because we added that extra half hour every day. So just getting it for them.
All right. I would need a motion and a second for the community ed wraparound care supervisor.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Patrick, seconded by Wayne. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. And we have the community education board order contract.
So this position is also 260 days. And in the 23, 24 school year, the increase is three percent. And then for the 24, 25 school year, the increase again is three percent. And you'll notice that we did increase the 403 B matching similar between all the employees. Health insurance, again, there is no retro for 23, 24. 24, 25 is an increase to match. The other terms of employment is ninety-four. Again, we added Juneteenth as a holiday. And we, we did strike a few different things in these terms of employment. One is that there had been a one-time payment for monitoring social media. That this employee does not do that anymore, so we removed that. And then there was also a stipend for insurance if the employee did not take insurance. And so that was removed from the terms of employment. And the one thing we did add for this employee is a stipend for their cell phone due to the many different activities that they host in the evening and using their own cell phone. So we did agree to the cell phone stipend. Okay.
Overall package over two years is 6.08%.
I would need a motion and a second for the community education coordinator contract.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Patrick, seconded by Stephanie. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. And that would complete our contracts through community education staff. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So then we move on to the assistant to the director of child nutrition contract.
So this is a 225 day contract. And on year one and year two for salary increase, it was a three percent increase. We also added Juneteenth as a holiday. And the other, the other part that we added, I believe in this term of employment, the employee did not have any personal days either. And so we added in the language two personal days and we kept the language similar to other terms of employment where the employee can fill the personal days to accumulate to four personal days. The other thing that we talked about that was important to you is supporting attendance at conferences. We all know that we have a wonderful food service program and we want to make sure that we're still pretty edge. So we did feel that was important to support that. And I would believe that was the highlights for the terms of employment. Oh, insurance, thank you, Erin. Insurance as well is to ninety, ninety-four from eighty-six eleven. And there was a stipend and that stipend had been removed. And so if you recall, in a lot of our at will contracts, we had insurance stipends and we clarified a little bit, folded around and working, I thought that was important. Those were removed from the terms of employment.
Total package over two years is 14.82 and it's just from the increase from the stipend to a whole day insurance cost. It's been driving that 14 percent.
Thank you. I would need a motion and a second to approve the assistant director of child nutrition contract.
Motion to approve.
And I have a second. Motion by Patrick, seconded by myself. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, continuing on, we're down to policies requiring review. This is discussion. First reading, call for public comment on the following policies. Policy 103, employment, student, employees, parents and other persons. Policy 203.2, order of a regular school board meeting. Policy 203.5, school board meeting agenda. Policy 524, internet, technology and cell phone acceptable use and safety policy. Policy 531, pledge of allegiance. Policy 533, wellness. Policy 704, development and maintenance of a inventory of fixed assets and a fixed asset economy system. Policy 709, student transportation safety policy. Policy 206, public participation in school boarding meetings, complaints about persons at school boarding meetings and data privacy considerations. Is there any discussion on those policies?
On policy 203 dash two, the order, recognition of visitors. I don't know if that's when Eric brings people here that have been successful, but I would like open forum for citizens to address the school board at the beginning and I'd like it inserted where it used to be at the end. And number six, presentation of additional bills for payment. I've never, you know, we don't have additional bills. They just give us our bills and we accept them. Nobody brings any additional bills to the table.
No, but these are industry, industry policies, so.
And written communication, exactly what, you know, is that. I think the policy needs to reflect what we actually do. Other old or unfinished business, ten or eleven, we don't add new, use any new business. When you go to some meetings, they do, we, we don't address it that way. But my main concern is I want open forum for citizens to address the school board. I'd like that to be considered at the beginning of the meeting and at the end of the meeting like we used to do.
I do find that interesting that this is our policy, but this isn't actually how we do our meetings. And I understand it is the model policy from M S B A. But if we're not doing, I think, are we setting ourselves up for the eagle eye well wishers will say?
I don't think so because if you look in a policy, they use the word similar. So I think that's where it's suggested. And then in policy 203.5, I would believe, again, it's to, let's make the chair under everyone, yes. I believe that is the policy that sets the school board chair to develop the policy. I have a cleaner copy and I don't have any note copy dripping.
I'm just curious to make sure we're, if we always talk about our policies, we fall aside from this double checking.
There are more potential difficulty if we go off the M S B A's policy too far. I mean, we do a phobia policies.
Yes.
And then, you know, majority are the M S B A mono policies because their legal has gone through them. So if we're changing their legal, that's going to run into potential. And so this was discussion only and first reading. So we'll move on to.
To say I've voted for the secretary of share, I really miss having no comments at the end like we used to. I think that would be very informative for the board. If we did something that the public didn't like, at least they let us know right away. I think that's important as far as not having transparency.
You don't go back to the policy committee?
I would agree with that, with that. My mom used to go to a lot of board meetings and she was a teacher. And then you say to her, you want to say something now? And she goes, no, because I haven't what you've done yet. I'll wait till the end. So.